Yeah.
Yeah.
Like we're protected, like we're sealed. But it is funny.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, at six o'clock, we'll call the Sartell City Council meeting to order for September twenty-second. Please rise for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, council, first order of business tonight is the adoption of the agenda. I will take a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
There's a motion to approve the agenda, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that carries. Second item is the approval of the minutes, we have minutes from September eighth, regular city council meeting. I'll take a motion on that. We'll make a motion. A motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that carries as well. Uh, next, we do have one special presentation tonight, which the topic is Regional Human Rights Commission Annual Review.
All right, thank we are up. So my name is Yunis Ajay and I'm the chair for the Regional Human Rights Commission. So the St. Cloud Human Rights Commission serves five local cities, St. Cloud, St. Joseph, Stock Rapids, Sartell, and Wake Park. The commission's primary role is to provide education about the Minnesota Human Rights Act and the Minnesota Department of Human Rights. Our mission is to raise awareness about the role of human rights office and to connect individuals to resources and assistance when facing discrimination or related challenges. The commission hosts monthly public meetings where community members are welcome to observe sheer personal experiences of discrimination, raise concerns about systemic issues, or suggest areas that need attention. In addition, the commission organizes public forums on a wide range of human rights issues. The insights gathered from these events help the commission identify pressing issues and explore how we can best support our communities. Thank you.
Hello, that leaves me, I am Dr. Rachel Angelangelo and I, oh god. I represent Sartell on the Regional Human Rights Commission. And I would like to start by thanking everyone here, it was really seamless to work with the mayor and all of you here. Once we asked for, I reached out to, oh thank you, I reached out to Nikki and Nikki was readily available and in the course of my, I've been in Sartell for four years and in the course of that, I've connected with Anna and so my stay here has been really pleasant. Next slide please, oh, I have it here.
Yeah.
Ooh, I don't know if you can read it, but we did forward the slides in advance. So when we did the forum, these are the three questions that we focused on. We asked our participants, people mostly from Sartell here and all who work here. Why Sartell, why do you want to call Sartell home, what opportunities are available uh for growth in Sartell? And piggybacking off that question, we also took some ideas how to improve it. So it's a really busy slide, I wanted to keep it to three major slides, I'm glad you had it in advance. I'm gonna highlight some stuff, there were themes, six themes that emerged throughout the the conversation, the forum that we did. A strong sense of community, people love calling Sartell uh home because of a strong sense of community, uh family friendliness and environments around, safety and peacefulness, and I can attest to that. Access to nature, there's a lot of trees, when when I bought my house, I thought I was in the middle of the woods, so I've learned to love it. It's really lovely. Convenience amenities and education and economics. So if you read each of those sites with the sense of community, some of the comments that came out was neighbors know each other and I can attest to that, um, I don't, I am more familiar with some neighbors than others, but I get along with everybody, so that's a great thing. Uh senior connection in the within Sartell community also, that's something that came up multiple times during the forum. And the community center, the fact that it has a playground, like a play area for children, it's really commendable and people pick up on that. Activities are affordable, you can go out on a hike and you don't have to pay anything. The city tries to put together activities, so those are some of the good positive things that came out. Walking around the lake at Christmas, that was also a highlight and a pride of Sartell. Proximity to healthcare, there's Centricare, I wear multiple hats, so I work at Centricare, so chuchu, kudos to Centricare also. I'm a cheerleader, so in me, being a resident of Sartell, you got a cheerleader in me. I pray Sartell everywhere, if you ever need a diverse opinion or someone to hype up Sartell, not for no reason. I love this place, I love Sartell, that's why I get involved in Sartell. So opportunity for growth, some of, oh, let me go back to one thing, someone had, one person mentioned lower taxes. Uh, I kind of like, I would grow to love that, for now, I feel like the taxes are high though. Coming from the Twin Cities, I lived in my house in Champlin for eighteen years and compared to this, I, when I came here, it hit me like a brick. I thought it was high, but it was eye-opening to hear that some people actually appreciate that the taxes are low. So some opportunities, uh housing and affordability, probably there's nothing new that you're hearing here. Uh, it's dark in the community, people feel like houses are getting a lot more expensive with the townhouses going for upper two, two thousands, so. So people suggested that maybe a rent regulation, I personally, I do understand the challenges that will come with that, but we're just presenting the information. Affordability could be controlled by capping rent, those are some of the things. Space for walking, people had concern that uh the city is selling up land and they're building too close to each other. Those are some comments that came up. And there was a, there was a plea to stop selling land, before you know it, Sartell will not have trails or stuff like that. That city should stop selling city land to private developers. And there was also a plea for Leandro Avenue to be fixed, actually fixed, not just filling the potholes and winter comes around and it gets eroded. Then the school system also, people felt like um the school system could better work with City Hall so that it would be more integrated and welcoming. And on the next slide, actually regarding the school system, bridging our community gaps, those, the terms that uh, the themes that emerged was through communication and awareness, Sartell does a great job, but we don't really communicate it out that way, so maybe there could be improvement in co- communicating what we do. And there was specific, at least three people wanted to see large prints on whatever we put on brochures or what. I can totally understand, I'm getting blind myself, it's like when you cross forty or forty-three, you start, so whoever prints them, just be inclusive of people who are vision impaired, they want the prints to be, or there should be an option for large prints, that's what they want. And bear signage specifically, uh sign that was around the post office, they said uh better signage could be valuable around that area. Inclusion and representation, this also ties to, I want to highlight the the school system thing. They thought I should present to you, we should present to you the option of maybe opening up the school enrollment to other districts. I don't know if we're at capacity, my, I have three kids, one went to to Stevenson and I did notice also, yeah, there's that lack of inclusion or diversity in the schools. So they thought if you open it up to other neighboring schools, it might really bring a blend or needed blend within the school system. Then community engagement, there's activities in the community and that was really commended. And people wanted to learn about other cultures, things happening, they wanted to learn about like, we have, we have Muslims in the community, we have uh bi parks in the community, just a rich variety of knowing your neighbor. And I always joke personally that uh racism has been solved in my neighborhood. It's, it's funny, but let me describe it, I have a neighbor who who originally ethnicity is Israeli. I have another one who is Pakistani, if you follow the news, they, those two nations don't get along, right? But they have kids and it's just a delight watching them play, go back and forth each other's houses, so it can be done and. Here are some pictures that I want to share and conclusively, there's not much that we can do as the Human Rights Commission. We cannot sit in every city's meeting or, but we would love to have an ally, we would love to, a willing participant, somebody who would be uh that timeout person, uh my background is healthcare, so I use, we use timeout. It's like every policy that we do, we take a pause, like how is this policy affecting all all groups of people? Just that timeout might force you to see, are we disenfranchising certain groups over other groups and just do the right thing and be inclusive? Um, have anything else to say? She she represents uh Wake Park, yeah, St. Cloud, Sartell, thank you.
Great, thank you for all that feedback. Council, we do have that, uh, I think we've captured all those notes as well for discussion. Uh, council, next is community linkage, we have the Wyndham Garden Hotel subsidy package.
Yeah, with us tonight, we have Tammy Almdal from Northland Securities, our municipal advisor, who will be presenting more on tax abatement background and then also some specifics from the deal, so I'll hand it over to you, Tammy.
Thank you, Rob.
We'll pause one moment.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'm willing to disqualify myself on this matter, I have a personal financial interest in front of me, so.
Yep, thank you, so it'll be a council of four regarding this topic.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, as interviewed, I'm Tammy Almdal with Northland Public Finance, we serve as advisor to the city. So as I present this, I am presenting on behalf of the city. It has been a while since a tax abatement, especially for economic development, has been before the city council. So I'm gonna give a brief overview of what tax abatement is and then I will speak to the specifics of the request and application that the city received and the resolution and action this evening. With respect to overview of tax abatement authority, I think it'll say this, for those that want statute references there, but I want to focus on this. So you hear the term tax abatement, it sounds like taxes would not be paid. That is not how tax abatement works in Minnesota, there is no abatement of taxes, all property, when subject to a tax abatement agreement, pays their taxes in full on the same schedule as they otherwise would. If the term tax abatement has to do with subject to action by the city council, passing a resolution and an agreement with a private developer, that amount, similar to like how tax increment financing works, there is a reimbursement of cost. So I want to start with that, there is no true tax abatement in Minnesota, um if you're familiar with other states, that does exist. It is not in Minnesota with respect to economic development. How the tax abatement works is the city raises the equivalent taxes from new development, increase in tax base, from levying those taxes off of that new development. So subject to your approval, next, um, in two years, when you're working on your budget, there will actually be a levy, a line item for the tax abatement pursuant to the contract that you may enter into this evening. It functions similar to TIP, um and it may be used for purposes similar to TIP. The reason that cities turn to the tax abatement public finance tool instead of tax increment financing or TIP is often when a project won't qualify for TIP. The specifics for this project, for example, it would not have qualified for TIP. But even if a project does qualify for tax increment financing, tax abatement is always an option for the city to want. To use a tax abatement, it's far less complex and detailed than statutory findings and tax increment financing. Um, I was before you last with the TIP district and there, there was notification to the county, the county commissioner, the school district, there was a long lengthy plan, that does not exist with tax abatement, it's much more straightforward. There is notice of a public hearing which was scheduled um for this evening. And then following that public hearing, there's a resolution that you've docked and that's it, so it's much less complex than TIP. There are two requirements, expects, you need to expect the benefits to equal or exceed costs, very straightforward, and must be in the public's interest as any action that the city council will take. Again, no specific statutory criteria, potential benefits, jobs, tax base, attract other businesses, goods and services. When I speak to the specifics of the um hotel project really there, jobs and tax base are the focus. There is limitation in how much a city or authority may approve for tax abatement. In Sartell, because of your size, it's ten percent of your net tax capacity, so that's not the total amount of assistance, that's the amount every year that you can approve in a tax abatement level, you cannot exceed ten percent of your net tax capacity or two hundred thousand, which is greater, that or two hundred thousand really helps smaller cities that just don't have the tax base that a city like Sartell does. Here's a graphic, in tax abatement, it sounds confusing, it's really, what are the parcels subject to the abatement? In the case tonight before you, there's just one parcel which I will identify, so those parcels are identified. The abated tax capacity of the parcels is calculated in Minnesota, the assessor values taxable properties with estimated tax of, um, excuse me, market value, which is subject to different class rates. That is how what tax capacity is and then multiplied by a jurisdiction's tax rate. In this case, just the city is considering the tax abatement tonight, has nothing to do with the county or school district, just the city. And that is equal to that annual abatement levy that you will certify in the future after the project is built and there's tax base to capture. The type of a um abatement assistance, pagow, meaning as the property pays the taxes twice a year, subject to an agreement that you would enter into, payments are made to the property owner, let me correct myself. Sometimes the property owner and the developer remain the same, but the tax abatement stays with the entity that enters into the agreement. So property ownership can change, the tax abatement does not stay with the property, it stays with the entity that entered into the agreement. There's also upfront assistance, that's not as common, that is where the city would issue bonds to provide funds upfront or inter fund loans, whatever. That is not the consideration this evening is for pagow assistance. The benefits is noted, um, there's a list, a new project may result in jobs or housing, tax abatement can be used for housing as well, not subject to the agreement tonight. Additional revenue potentially spent within the community is a benefit, increased revenue for city services and may encourage additional development in the community, all reasons to consider tax abatement for a private project. The challenges, foregoing tax revenue from development for a specified period. However, while there's not legally a but for finding that you make, when you're considering it and when I give um the analysis on the specific project, you're looking at, would this project proceed without this assistance? Well, that's not a statutory requirement, that is what Northland on your behalf looks at that project and what is the amount of assistance for the project to be feasible. Jump ahead here, city must require the developer to certify actual project cost to be reimbursed from tax abatement, not TIP, that is the type of. And then city may issue a tax abatement revenue note to a developer, similar to TIP, which is why it says TIP there, so function's similar. Now, just a few slides left to talk about the specific request that is before the city council this evening. Here's the parcel identified in the green outline and the PID listed, I would note that parcel was also included in the hearing notice um for the public hearing this evening and that is required by law that that be published. The overview of the request from the developer, proposed projects by the developer includes the construction and equipping of an approximate eighty-six room um with Wyndham Play and Garden Hotel. Stearns County has reviewed this um plan and estimated taxable market value of six point five. The actual value will vary, we ask the the city to have the developer meet with the assessor to get indication of taxable market value, but that does not mean that's what the value will be once the project is constructed, it is an estimate. And then the developer has represented that the project is not feasible without the tax abatement assistance. So with respect to the analysis, questions that we asked is, what is the amount of assistance that is needed? Is it necessary that there be a public subsidy or assistance provided by this city? The objective is to provide the minimum amount for the project to be feasible and we often refer to, we're trying to get to a win-win, meaning there is public benefit for the city in providing this business subsidy and there is benefit to the developer with respect to the project being feasible. The proposed terms, the estimated maximum city tax abatement to assist the project over a ten-year, not exceed ten-year period is approximately four hundred sixty-one thousand future value, so that's cumulative total payments over that period. This excludes the city tax revenue from the base, the current value of the property. The average annual tax abatement is estimated to be about forty-six thousand, that will vary depending on the actual value and your city tax rates change each year as you adopt your budget. City may consider, this is the last slide, approval of tax abatement by resolution, which is before you, this evening, following the public hearing. Upon approval of the resolution authorizing the tax abatement, the city may then approve entering into the agreement to provide the assistance. So the assistance is in the amount stated and then there are also jobs and wage requirements that are applied in the agreement. With that, Mayor, council members, I would be happy to answer any questions, otherwise I will turn it back to the council.
Thank you for that overview, council, any questions before we put a public hearing? Seeing none, thank you. Uh, council, we will open a public hearing for the tax abatement, anyone wishing to testify, please step forward. If you'd state your name, uh, address and affiliation for the record.
Doug Bozer, Adventure Properties, thirty-nine five, First Street South, St. Cloud. Uh, tonight I represent the development team, Rod Lindquist, myself and our team at Adventure. I'm really excited to sit in front of, or stand in front of the mayor and members of the council with a a very exciting project. Um, this has been a long journey for us, as a development team, we've been thinking about this project for well over thirteen, fourteen years now. And as we've seen the economic headwinds, tailwinds and headwinds, we never knew exactly what time would be right for this project. And um this last winter, Rod approached me and said, we think this is, could be the possible time to start this project. Obviously, a lot of economic development around the area with Centricare, Nyron Magnetics, congratulations everybody to that. And our placement of this prom- of this project and we started to look at some of the twenty-twenty-two data that said this is a time for about ninety units of housing, along with all of the other um things that started to stack up on top of it. We said, this is the time to start to proceed. We started to look at our own market data and saw that we could see that a way through that, but also these times are also very expensive. And so cost of construction, cost of development have continued to rise, so. With that, we've provided the data to Northland to look at the underwriting of that. Um, I think we've got a a really solid project here, but without this, it makes it very difficult for us to proceed. So we um anticipate or hope that tonight you'll uh look at this as a positive step forward for the city Sartell and to approve this request. Be happy to answer any questions.
Council, any, any questions? Seeing none, thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on the proposed tax abatement? Third and final call, anyone wishing to testify on the tax abatement for Wyndham Garden Hotel? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Uh, staff, anything else to add on to that or?
Nope, nothing.
Council in front of us, uh, looking for two separate items, uh, the first one is the tax abatement. Is there a motion for the tax abatement?
I'll make a motion to approve?
There's a motion to approve the tax abatement, is there a second?
All second.
The motion and a second on the tax abatement proposed, any uh discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, that carries four, zero. And the second item is the hotel incentive package, is there a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve the hotel incentive package, is there a second? There's a motion to approve the hotel incentive package, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries four zero. Thank you, gentlemen. Council, next up is the consent agenda. We have eight items on the consent agenda. Is there a motion on the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. And on to action items, we have the twenty-twenty-six preliminary levy.
Mayor, members of the council, we're here before you tonight for the twenty-twenty-six preliminary levy. I'm gonna kick us off and then I'll turn it over to Rob for more detailed explanation of the levy, and then I'll come back up and summarize this. So we thought we'd start with just a recap. I know you, this, a lot of this is repeat reuse of council, but for just general public review, just to understand the education and thorough time and effort that went into this over the course of, as you can see, several meetings that took place since May. So we, this year, we kicked off a more comprehensive and connected process, including the study and strategic theme that we wanted to initiate, which really drove our vision going forward. This included multiple workshop sessions, multiple educational sessions, deep dives, and then, as I mentioned, just really with the notion of the entire process being that we're looking to sustain what we're doing, sustain our operations, and building strategic reserves going forward. Tonight, you'll notice that we are at our last stop, which is the approval of the twenty-twenty-six preliminary levy. So everything we've done up until tonight has led us to tonight, culminating with the approval of the financial management plan that you approved at the last regular meeting on September eighth. As I mentioned, I won't go through these in great detail, but just wanna be able to share mostly with the public of everything we reviewed since May. So education review, the overall process, we went through each CIP fund, we went through all of our enterprise funds, went to our general funds. And then, as I mentioned, at last regular meeting, we approved the twenty-twenty-five to twenty-thirty-four ten-year financial management plan, which really sets us up to the point tonight, which is the adoption of the twenty-twenty-six preliminary levy, which combines approval of CIP, some portions of enterprise, and then operational needs. The FMP that you approved last meeting builds over both our investments over those ten years into our community, but then also our debt strategy. So we just listed a few critical and important items here. That FMP approves forty-five million dollars over the course of the ten years for street improvement projects. You can see the capital improvement, the park improvements that were reinvested into the community. On the enterprise fund side of things, which would be your water source, stormwater funds. You can see the multiple improvements, fifty million dollars in that ten-year time period as well. With that, strategic bond issuances throughout the ten years, so that we can avoid large levy or utility rate increases, all at the same time while maintaining our debt below our max policy of five percent of estimated market value. Really, to summarize the FMP that we approved last meeting, the big key items is that that ten-year plan includes a zero percent tax rate for the entirety of the ten years. So really creating that stability along the way. Managing our debt, managing our general fund growth of no more than two point five percent each year, and projecting a five percent net tax capacity growth each year along the way as well. This item that you would have seen last meeting, it's the total tax levy. So we project out within that FMP, the ten years of the tax levy as well. As I mentioned, the zero percent tax rate increase, so keeping that tax rate at forty-one point six percent for the duration of the ten years. As you can see from this chart, really speaking to the idea of maintaining the blue area, so steady operations and growing the orange area, which is our strategic reserves, reinvesting into those reserves, building up cash to be able to manage the capital projects. Total city debt, as I mentioned with the FMP, keeping this below the five percent estimated market value, which is the top line that you see on that chart, and striving towards being within our target, which is between one point five percent and two point five percent of estimated market value. So we hover right around that top line, right around that two point five percent estimated market value with the variety of projects. All the colors on the chart signify the different bond issuances. Maybe a little bit easier way to look at it is breaking it down by department. And so this is the same exact lines, you're looking at debt additionally here, and then signifying, you know, whether it's utility streets or fire. Again, just a reminder to council that the debt is where you see enterprise combined with our general fund and our CIP funds. Otherwise, tonight, this will really be the last piece where you'll review enterprise funds. Those are meant to be self-sustaining and are not funded by the levy. So with that, we will turn it over to Rob, and he will present on the specifics of the preliminary levy, and then I will come back to summarize.
Yeah, I've gotten a couple of comments about the volume not being the best at the podium, so I'll present from here if that's okay. So beginning with the process, as Anna had mentioned on the previous slides, we've gone through a very long-term thoughtful planning process that brings us to the preliminary levy that's being proposed at the meeting today. On the next slide, we'll take a closer look at item number one, which is aligning priorities with the National Community Survey data. So this is the National Community Survey from twenty-twenty-four, which outlines all of the city's facets, and shows that the quality of service aligns with what the community values. This balance, as Anna had mentioned, allows us to maintain service levels without disproportionately shifting resources, which is exactly where we wanna be. Moving to twenty-twenty-six estimated tax capacity, this chart shows our net tax capacity over the course of eight years. And for taxes payable in twenty-twenty-six, the increase is estimated at two point six percent, and that's from both county assessors, the lowest that we've seen historically over the past eight years, largely due to a very small adjustment to existing properties, along with modest net improvements. As you can see, adjustments to existing properties being pretty substantial in twenty-twenty-three, and then thus adjusting downwards ever since. Also to note, nearly seventy percent of our tax capacity growth does come from those net adjustments, so a very important driver in our net tax capacity each year. Moving to the twenty-twenty-six proposed levy, so the levy is how much the city wants to collect, and it's set after considerations of all other revenues. We take non-property tax revenue, we take our expenditures, and there's typically a gap. And we fill that gap with the levy in order to budget balance. Again, the levy is at two point six percent, which matches our net tax capacity growth, resulting in a flat tax rate. And it's the lowest percent in the past six years, driven mostly by the low net tax capacity increase that we're experiencing in twenty-twenty-six. And the biggest levy, as you can see on this chart, is the general fund. So what is it that we're spending out of the general fund? Most of it is people-related, as nearly seventy-five percent of the general fund expenditures are for salaries and benefits. How the general fund is broken out by department, this probably doesn't come as a surprise, but majority of the expenditures out of our general fund do contribute to public safety, which is a high priority for residents and does align us very well with our National Community Survey. This slide highlights the year-over-year changes in our levy by category, starting with the general fund at one point nine percent. With cost of living adjustments for all employees assumed at three percent, the modest gross in the general fund allows us to direct more of our levy to our capital funds, which are up twelve point six percent. That in turn helps us stay on track with our long-term financial management plan and all the capital projects and expenditures. I can't say enough about all the staff's help and work on keeping general fund to one point nine percent, especially given that most of it is people-related and that three percent COLA increase on top of a three point two five percent step increase. So departments did a phenomenal job really squeezing their operational expenditures in order for us to be able to contribute more to capital and stay on track with our financial management plan. These are all the adjustments made to the general fund from the initial financial management plan, which was based on a projected five percent net tax capacity growth. There's a lot here in planning, going through all of them, but in general, we're planning for higher revenue and lower expenditures without sacrificing much of our services. These are the adjustments made to the capital funds from the initial financial management plan, which again was projected at five percent net tax capacity growth. We have an adjustment made to Public Works Equipment Fund and Fire Equipment Fund, which neither have immediate impact, rather, we're, we had a planned expenditure eight plus years out that we needed to defer a little bit longer because of less funding in twenty-twenty-six. Both of those equipment purchases were identified as a number two or number three on our priority list within our capital improvement planning. Then we get to tax rate, so we take the tax levy of ten point seven million divided by the total tax capacity of twenty-five point seven million to get us to a tax rate of forty-one point six percent, which is the same forty-one point six percent in twenty-twenty-five, thus resulting in a zero percent. Tax rate year-over-year or flat tax rate? How we compare regionally in regards to tax rate? So Sartell's tax rate, as Anna and I had mentioned, will remain flat in twenty-twenty-six at forty-one point six percent, whereas all the other neighboring cities, at least preliminarily, which can change for the final levy in December, are planning to raise them except Wade Park, which would keep us the lowest in the area. We're at the bottom blue line there, and we've been very consistent at that forty-one point six percent, you know, representing good financial practice. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Anna to close out the preliminary levy.
Hey, Rob, real quick on that last slide, do you know where Sauk Rapids' proposed rate is?
Yeah, after tackling the other finance director last week, and I don't know if this has been approved yet by the council.
Sure.
Gosh, is that the top of my head? It, it is a, it will be a result in a tax rate increase, I don't remember the figures off the top of my head, but
Okay.
I believe that would push them above forty-five percent.
Forty-five, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on the details I've ravelled through before? That's.
Before we transition to.
There we go.
There we go.
Plug it in.
Yep, before we transition over to closing it out for adoption. Okay, I will take us home then. Just to summarize, and then lead us into final levy preparations that will come in December. What Rob just presented, again, zero percent tax rate increase or flat tax rate maintaining the forty-one point six percent for the fifth straight year for the city of Sartell. We are the only city regionally to have done that, probably, I would maybe even venture to guess that that might be hold true for statewide as well, to be five years at a flat tax rate is pretty remarkable. And we also will be the lowest in the region again, with the others all reaching above forty-five percent. So we will be the lowest by several basis points going forward, which wasn't always the case. We were kinda neck and neck with Sauk Rapids for a while there. There's a one point nine percent increase to general funds, however, a twelve point six percent increase to CIP funds, which again speaks to the steady and strategic, hold the operation steady strategically built funds. So really trying to put money into those CIP funds for projects going forward. Projected increase in revenues in some areas and a reduction in personnel costs in others. And a continued ten-year financial management plan projection of the two point five percent overall general fund growth, five percent net tax capacity growth for that duration of the ten years, while staying within our debt policy. So that's just a summary of preliminary levy and the financial management plan, what you've approved for the financial management plan and how it has led to the levy. A few things just to be aware of between preliminary levy and final levy. We are projecting a COLA of three percent, that is the basement of the, of our union contracts. So it cannot, it won't be lower than that, but it could, of course, be higher based on the formula in our union contracts, but we are predicting three percent. We're predicting a modest increase in healthcare as we've moved to a new self-funded option there that's been proven to be a really great decision for us. Technology and subscriptions, we don't always know those until later in the year, and then, of course, our premium renewals as well. So some of these items might change between preliminary and final, which would then require us to make some adjustments likely to capital funds of that twelve point six percent. But we will work on that between now and December. On your consent agenda, approve the public hearing for the final levy in December eighth, if I recall correctly. As Rob mentioned, there were two capital, capital adjustments that were necessary to be made from the original, you know, when we talked about the financial management plan in May, towards when we were approving the financial management plan last meeting, the net tax capacity projection was five percent, ended up being two point six percent. So that resulted in two adjustments to our CIP. You can't read any of the writing on there because way too small, but they're the two items that Rob mentioned in Public Works and Fire. Really just delaying purchases that were already eight years out. And both of them were a number two and a number three priority on our list. Another item that we added this year through, for our entire process is creating opportunities costless. So what are the things that we were not able to fund? This list includes a total of twenty-four items, you just see the top ten there, recognizing that we likely won't get all twenty-four in one year. But if there were to happen to be, you know, a larger increase in net tax capacity than five percent, or if we were to end the year above our projected budget, if there were funds available, we would then go to this list. Items that were added to this list because of the change from May to September in net tax capacity would be the comprehensive plan update, and then those two CIP adjustments for fire and public works. Mentioned this in the workshop, but just wanna reiterate that any adjustments or recommendations that would, where we'd start chipping away at this list, would come back to council for final approval. So that is, any one of these items would require full council oversight and approval. In the orange is twenty-twenty-six, where you can see the, or kind of see the font is a little bit small. The zero percent tax rate at the end, zero percent flat tax of forty-one point six percent. So this is just the overall picture that you saw multiple times through the workshops of general fund, CIP funds, debt funds, and then plugging in the net tax capacity at the bottom. Note that there are no enterprise funds within here. Again, really the only part where that intersects with our levy and CIP work and, and general fund is on the debt aspect, and so they share debt issuances. So with that, we've reached the end of our financial planning process, congrats, you made it, we made it. This was our, as I mentioned, our full twenty-twenty-six financial planning roadmap. While you can go from preliminary to final levy, you can go down but not up. Sartell has historically always approved it right out of the gate at the preliminary levy at the zero percent. We've done that, as I've mentioned, for five straight years. Purpose behind that is the statements go out to residents this fall. And so we wanna be accurate in that, we wanna be able to provide them accurate information that's reliable for them, that isn't going to change. And so if it does change, it would only go down, it cannot go up. And so we are certifying the preliminary levy and making the recommendation to you to certify that at zero percent. So it's a little bit of a change from what other communities do, but that's an approach that we've taken to be really transparent to our residents of what they can expect for their taxes going into twenty-twenty-six. Final steps will be the fee schedule in November, and then the final levy in December via public hearing for both of them. But much of those items outside of what I've shared already that could potentially change are already set from your financial management plan. Again, just to reiterate this, the entire process, really the theme of it of maintaining our operations, and I think, as you saw tonight, it spoke to that of everybody's work on maintaining the, the general fund increase amount and really building those reserves by contributing almost thirteen percent more to capital improvement funds. In closing, what you're seeing before you tonight is the fifth straight year of a forty-one point six percent tax rate, flat tax rate, zero percent. You know, just to really summarize that, we never spend more than what we receive via the growth of our tax base in Sartell. And it has been a really remarkable model. It speaks to everybody's careful budgeting and responsible financial stewardship of recognizing how important it is to preserve those funds, build them up, and be able to provide amenities and capital projects going forward, reinvesting into our community. We create, by doing this, we create clear predictability and stability for our taxpayers in knowing that their city portion of their taxes will again remain flat. So they will not see a property tax increase in Sartell from the city portion unless the county changes their valuation. One thing to note is that residents should keep in mind that this is just the city portion. We do not have control over the county or the school's property taxes. So their property tax statement is made up of those three parts, we are just the city portion, and ours has maintained uh, a flat forty-one point six percent uh tax rate for five years. With that, uh, just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to lead our teams through this new process, uh, and for the council's continued support and engagement, and especially accountability that guides our work. We couldn't do what we're doing without the policies that you have set for us, so that we know the direction that you want to guide us in. Uh, we take great pride in the work that we do, as I know you all do as well. The property owners of Sartell should be really proud of the efforts of this collective group, both the elected officials and our staff. And especially should take pride in the fact that we take our jobs seriously, and we are responsible fiscal stewards of the resources that are provided to us from them. Um, so, wanted to just say thank you, uh, both to our team members and to all of you, cause it has been a really enjoyable process, and we're extremely proud, uh, to be able to be the only city in the region to be flat again for the fifth straight year. Uh, with that, sorry, um, you're probably about to say the same thing. With that, we would take any comments or questions, and then would just be looking for a motion in a second.
Counsel, any questions on the proposed twenty twenty-six preliminary levy?
I just wanted to, more of a comment than as a question, um, I think you guys did an excellent job with transparency. I know that there was a little bit of surprises coming back with the valuation being as low as it was, and makes it difficult in your staff, I think with your leadership, and I think you got your staff and your, your teams definitely crunched hard, and I think the city should really appreciate the work that you did to, to maintain that zero percent. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I'll just add the same thing that Tim just said, I, I think, you know, obviously the, the rates and the evaluations weren't as high, and you guys rolled up your sleeves. And, and I'll just also comment that there's been a ton of work done over the last five or six years, I know my time on council last three years, I, I really appreciate how it continues to evolve, um, and not start over. So you guys keep digging in and getting deeper and a stronger process as you continue to move forward, which probably made this maybe as tough as it might've been, maybe a little easier than it would've been, um, you know, six years ago to accomplish the same thing. So I know you guys work your, um, tails off for us and for the city, and I really appreciate that.
I would just say thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll just go down the road. No, I, I too appreciate everything and reiterate what these guys have said. And I know when we started this process in May, you thought it was gonna be a five percent increase, and it ended up being two point six, and you know, there, there wasn't a lot of hand-bringing, there wasn't a lot of, boy, we need to increase the rate now because this happened to us, and uh uh, appreciate all the hard work you've done. It's also, as you, I think, Tim alluded to transparency, um, anybody who wants to know what's going on in the city of Sartell with their finances, how your tax dollars are being spent, you've laid it out very clearly here, it's available to everybody, you can get it. Um, I wanna thank both staff and previous councils for getting in the practice of setting this zero percent, you know, increase in our tax rate. I, I've served eight years previously on the council, I think I got one of those, um, where we didn't increase the tax rate. It felt like every year I was fighting against that, and uh, we're fighting against increasing it, and I love that it's now a policy of the city of Sartell. So, uh, thank you to everybody on the staff for all your hard work, and um, council as well for everybody being in alignment with this.
I'll uh, I'll just echo all the thank you and praises, um, and I think the one thing we all could hope is that other elected bodies will see what's been done in the city of Sartell over, um, multiple years now, and uh, and take hold of that themselves, and be a good steward of all of our tax dollars that they get to manage, so. With that, counsel, I will look for a motion to approve yet another flat tax rate. Motion to approve, is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Only thing I'll add is that final step, uh, being we've got a uh new council this year, December eighth, will finalize all of this, subject to the changes that Anna had already spoken about. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Onto administrative and departmental incidental reports, uh, first up is administrator.
Mayor members of the council, let me know if you have any questions on my September nineteenth admin, uh, administrator incidental report.
Any uh questions, comments for the September nineteenth report? Seeing none, thank you. Community development? Welcome back.
Thank you. Uh, mayor and members of the council, you have my monthly of report in your packet, just a change that I just wanna highlight, we've been talking about um, as you can see there on the second page of my report, I did include a graph that Rob and I put together to really see, um, how those valuations impact our five percent year-over-year growth that we, um, plan for. So you can see twenty twenty-five value is just over forty-six million. And just keep in mind that on the first page, you see about twenty million in valuations. The difference in those valuations since projects coming online from last year. So, for example, Central Care will now be online, they'll have their certi- certificate of occupancy by the end of this year, so that's one of the projects. There's other various commercial projects that came online. And then you can see the twenty twenty-six value is five point seven million, and that's projects that have began or will begin this year but won't come online or be active and open until next year. So there's those differences, um, and then also projects that aren't included in these valuations. One would be Niron Magnetics, we did approve a TIF earlier this year. Um, they have not submitted for a permit yet, but they won't be included in those valuations, and either will the Wyndham Hotel. We, you all approved the abatement this evening, but they did submit for a permit, but they're not included in the valuations on the report. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Any questions for community development? Maybe one tactical, and maybe we can talk offline too about it, but it'd be interesting if we could, um, at least capture what that valuations are, even though they're not computed in there. I think it gives us more forward guidance of what that will be when an abatement falls off or the TIF does fall off. I also think it's a call out to the work that's been done to drive value, and I don't wanna take that away based off of a TIF or a, a abatement being in place.
Yeah, good, good note, I can include that, I don't have the specific valuations yet, um, one, Niron hasn't submitted their permit, so I don't know that valuation, and then the Wyndham Hotel has submitted it, but we're still refining some of those valuations, but I can include that.
No, just, uh, I, just wanna call it out, so I was reading through that, I, again, I think it shows really well, um, but I just wanna also recognize what's, what has also taken place, so, thank you. Uh, finance?
Yes, good evening, mayor and members of the council, you have my incidental report as well, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for finance? Seeing none, thank you. We have council announcements, uh, Tim, we'll start with you.
Uh, nothing tonight, thank you.
Pat? Rusty?
Nothing tonight.
Judd?
Nothing today.
Come on, it's the busiest time in Sartell's. Uh, lots happening tonight, Nikki, I might lean on you here a little bit, uh, for timing on some of the dates, but, um, I think it kicks off Thursday with a uh tour from the uh House. Capital Investment Committee is touring, uh, we'll be in Sartell, specifically in the central Minnesota healthcare hub, and um, reviewing our bond requests that'll be in place there. So we've got a number of partners, uh, not only city staff, elected officials, also some uh developer and medical partners that'll be uh presenting on the city's behalf there. So excited for that happening, um, and then we will also have a Niron magnetic groundbreaking, uh, the following day.
Yes, busy couple days.
Anything else I'm missing?
Nope, that was good.
All right. Uh, so yes, busy time in Sartell, again, high accolades to all those involved in making uh Thursday and Friday this week a success. I will look for a motion to adjourn. So, all second it, all favor. Aye, we're adjourned.